This council meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This meeting of December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three was published in the Courier-News and Star-Ledger and placed on the borough's website. Notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Dennis Sullivan.
Here.
Council members Granville Brady.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Vroom.
Here.
Theresa Bonner.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Please rise, join me in the flag salute and remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we often must do before our public meeting begins, we take a moment to reflect on the lives and accomplishments of people who have contributed to our community, to the United States and to the world at large. As we did two weeks ago with First Lady Carter, we lost two great individuals over the past few days, Supreme Court Justice Sandra Day O'Connor and former Secretary of State Henry Kissinger. They may not have had a direct impact on our lives here in Somerville, but we all share the same planet together. They both contributed civically, socially, helping our, you know, each of us and our fellow men in some small measure. Moment of silence for Sandra Day O'Connor and Henry Kissinger. Thank you. You may be seated. We have one set of minutes from November twenty. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Council members Granville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Theresa Bonner.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
We have one departmental report, the reorganization meeting on January first, two thousand and twenty-four, at noon, and Kevin, the site is in Somerville High School, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that will be published in all the regular venues. Okay. We can go a little bit out of order tonight. I have a couple of special presentations, very briefly, while we have in the audience, a young man that I've known since he was ten years old. He attended Somerville schools, did very well in school, went off to college, came back to Somerville, spent many, many years representing the town and volunteer activities, was elected to the Borough Council in two thousand and seventeen on the famous Sullivan Weed ticket of two thousand and seventeen. It was my pleasure to have him as a running mate, and I would like to call up for the presentation of his plaque since he left us this past fall. Councilman Fred Weed.
One minute. One minute. It's fifty-nine seconds too long. No, I just want to thank the mayor, my council members, my council member who took over my spot, who's doing a great job so far, and the previous folks I served with, Councilman Jay Kabuda and fellow Mayor Allen Brain, who are not here, but working well. I want to thank everyone. It takes a village, it's a cliche, but it truly is. You've got to listen, you've got to talk to people, and it's, this is what it's about. The hard work pays off. I remember sitting in that dreary council chamber, and now we have a nice council chamber that we can be proud of, we can invite people in. I'm not saying we couldn't invite people in the old one, but that day was a piece of garbage. I can say that now, but I'm working with department heads, administrator, attorney, doing the hard work, and I'm sure, you know, I got red-faced a few times behind closed doors, but it's all through the betterment of Somerville because that's where everyone's heart is. And as they say, no matter where I may go, I'm always close to my home. Thank you, Mayor.
For the youngsters in the room, you may know I'm a big fan of Abraham Lincoln, and I often look on the internet for quotes by Lincoln, and if he said everything that is purported to have been said by him, he would have spent his whole life just talking. But one quote that I know he said because it's been documented, and it goes like this, "I will prepare myself, and one day my chance will come." He was about twelve years old when he said that, and I think, looking back on history, he prepared himself very well, and when his chance came, he did a pretty good job. So take that with you. On that happy note, we have another set of presentations tonight, and I think it's very fitting with the lack of good professional football in our area right now. I'm a giant fan. I know there were some Jet fans around, and I'm sure there are some Eagle fans, and they took it on their chin this week, too. But here in Somerville, hopefully I'm going to be talking about some future NFL players tonight. Kevin, you want to give us just a brief introduction to our guests?
Yeah, so certainly I did mention to some of them that their only loss this season was against Staten Island, and I know Mayor is from Staten Island, so while he's celebrating it tonight, there's my little sneaky nuttiness about him that maybe he thinks Staten Island won, but...
I have no relatives left on Staten Island, so none of them were in that game.
But yeah, so Art Aitkins reached out to me, and this is the Somerville-Branchford squad, and reached out and certainly had a great season and wanted to make sure that his players were recognized for the fine season that they had, and we presented, we prepared a recognition for each one of them.
I'm going to ask my council president, Mr. Pitts, to join me at the table. What I'll do is I'll read the proclamation in its entirety, and then we'll call up each individual athlete for his award. And if one voice gives out, you can, Mr. Pitts, feel free to step up. This is a resolution recognizing the Somerville-Branchford United Pop Warner Twelve-and-under Somerville Junior Pioneers team in becoming the Central Jersey Pop Warner Twelve-and-under Division III Champions. Whereas the two thousand and twenty-three Somerville-Branchford United Pop Warner Twelve-and-under program comprised of Somerville Borough and Branchford Township children, known as the Somerville Junior Pioneers, had an outstanding two thousand and twenty-three regular season with six wins and one loss. And whereas as soon as the season started, the Junior Pioneers came storming out of the gate with a shutout win against Hightstown, twenty to zero, but that suffered a minor setback during their second game of the season against Staten Island D-two team in a point zero loss, and quickly bounced back to dominate the rest of the season against North London, thirty-three to zero, Basking Ridge, twenty-six to six, Plainfield, thirty-four to six, Bills Borough, twenty-two to six, and ending the regular season with a strong win against the Skyway, thirty-two to six. Whereas the six-and-one season earned the team an opportunity to face Basking Ridge in the semifinals, a game that proved that teamwork and toughness would prevail, beating Basking Ridge for the second time with a score of twenty-one to twenty, earning the Junior Pioneers an opportunity to play for the championship title. And whereas the Junior Pioneers would have to go through a formidable foe, being Edison, however, on championship day, the Pioneers flung it all on the field as they trounced Edison, thirty-two to seven, earning them the title of Central Jersey Pop Warner Twelve-and-under Division III Champions. It is therefore be resolved that I, then the solemnly mayor of the Borough of Somerville, along with the Somerville Borough Council and the residents of Somerville Borough, hereby join congratulating the players and coaches of the Somerville-Branchford United Pop Warner Twelve-and-under Junior Pioneers on their success, and especially on becoming the twentieth-fourth Division III Central Jersey Pop Warner Twelve-and-under Division III Champions, signed by myself and the sovereign mayor, Kevin Stukelis, in twelve-four twenty-three. Congratulations. Head coach, Mike Dugan, assistants? We have, we have Mike Dugan, Art Aitkins, John Gase, Mike Tosh, now the twenty-four outstanding players, including Akim. Michael Dugan. Alvin Flora. Louie Jack. Joshua Lopez. Mark O'Neil. Jacob Cole. Bryce Thomas. Michael Tom Greeno. Clinton Pence. Jason Pence. Luke Resnick. Antonio Wargood. Michael Seale. Drew Sutton. Teddy Tullis. Daniel Warren. And last but not least, Jonathan Lewis. Ladies and gentlemen, our champions. How many of you will be going on to high school yet? Not yet? I look forward to seeing you on Brooksfield. Please, well done. Well. When people ask us why we do what we do, it's living proof. Parents, grandparents, friends, coaches, it takes a village, and we've got the best village in the world. Thank you, everybody. Well, it's tough to follow football, but I have another special presentation tonight.
I thought the crowd was here for us, buddy.
We're welcome. Randy, I'll turn it over to you. No? Oh. All right, we'll turn it over to DSA.
Thank you. Mike Kerwin here with Natalie Pernino. We're here to present the budget as part of the process of the Special Improvement District. The budget was reviewed carefully by our board and voted to be introduced, subject to this presentation, and then we'll have a public hearing. Natalie has a short, concise presentation, so I'll turn it over to her in a minute, but I just would like to kind of share with you a couple of the thoughts that the board has, and I think we collectively share, I guess, a common theory of the business, if you will. If there's any other doubt that Somerville Downtown has emerged as one of the primary destinations in the state of New Jersey, I defy you to go to that parade the other night on Saturday night. That was amazing. Amazing community parade, and I think it just solidifies the fact that we're no longer looking to come back. We are back, and I think we collectively, everyone in this room, can just take a pause and, you know, congratulate and give ourselves a pat on the back because we worked a long time to get to that point. Do want to particularly thank the Mayor Sullivan and Councilman Brady, as you leave public office, for your support over the years for the downtown Somerville initiative. Greatly appreciate it. And as we move forward, our motto frankly is, you know, don't coast. You know, now that you've emerged as this premier downtown, you know, the question is, you know, how do you keep on, keep it going? So, and then Natalie, we, you know, give a review of some of the things we have in mind, but the two things that stick out to me are the events that we have are amazing. I don't know of any other downtown that goes across the board from Jazz Fest to Tour Somerville to the Frayvah Center, and it's absolutely fantastic. So we want to keep that, if not, take that to the next level. And then my special thing dear to my heart is the Paul Robeson Project. What a great opportunity that is for Somerville to reclaim our status as the place where Paul Robeson emerged as a scholar, as an athlete, as an orator, as a community. It all happened in Somerville, thanks to nurturing he received from Somerville. Not that we are perfect, but I think it was really, Somerville has a lot to say, you know, was responsible for a lot of the emergence of Paul Robeson, and I think it's time that we make that known and commemorate that appropriately. So that's going to be the big thing, at least in my mind, that we can look forward to in this coming year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Natalie.
Thank you, guys. Mayor, council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to return again to present our budget and talk about some of the great things that we have in store for the coming year. So when we put together the budget, we were really considering a few different things, primarily some principles for strategic growth. And so if you see on the slides that hopefully you have in front of you, there are six key principles that we were thinking about when we put together the budget. So first and foremost, we were thinking about room, right? And we know that room is extremely important because it enhances places where people can feel comfortable. So this encompasses things like sidewalk walkability, safety, and implementing aspects of our streetscape plan. Next, we looked at a principle called richness, right, or stimulating rich environments. So richness in diversity, in the landscape, and creativity in place. This involves enhancing our strategies for business recruitment and retention, investment in storefront design. And then we look at, if you jump to the left, exploration, right? So this is finding things that we find stimulating, fulfilling, and useful. So in downtown Somerville, it means doing things like continuing the momentum of our public art program. Jumping across, we look at programming, and for us, it means programming with purpose, right? So meaning programs and events that connect people to the streets and environments that are found in the downtown Somerville Special Improvement District. Next, we look at diversity, right? Investing in concepts that help people see themselves in our district, right? That sense of connection is going to make people come back. And then finally, we look at breadcrumbs. I talk about breadcrumbs all the time. If you guys have been to a board meeting, I'm sure you've heard me talk about it, but the breadcrumbs are this idea that we create a trail of experiences on our streets that connect our major anchors and transportation hubs to each other, right? And give our patrons a journey to follow when they come into the district. So I want to start off by looking, by doing a historical look at some of those principles in action. So back during COVID, we had the incredible opportunity to do this parklet program, right? And this allowed us room to dedicate more sidewalk space to pedestrian traffic. When we looked at richness, exploration, diversity, right? We're looking at our public art programs, right, and our cultural celebrations that offers richness through creativity in place, exploration, and diversity. When we look at programming with purpose, and again, diversity, we look at those cultural events that inspire connection to our community, and it helps the community members see themselves reflected in the things that we're doing. And then finally, looking at this incredible trail of breadcrumbs, at our spectacular events, hopefully at our upcoming holiday jubilee, we're praying for no rain, wherein we connect all of the major anchors in our district through strategic placement of attraction and activities. So all these things considered, we put together the budget that I'm so proud to present to you all today. And so what we're looking at in two thousand and twenty-four is four primary opportunities. So first, we're looking to create a connected ecosystem through our streetscape plan to support the downtown Somerville experience, right? So it's an opportunity for more proactive and strategic visioning. We have an opportunity to support the East Main Street redevelopment plan to ensure complementary and supportive redevelopment. We have an opportunity to continue to enact our public art plan by completing a historic legacy project in the district that Mike so eloquently spoke about, our Paul Robeson statue, and then finally, continue to develop the DSA's organizational value by enhancing our economic development capacity. We know that over the past four years, right, we were trying to, we were forced to be in a proactive phase, right? We had no choice but to start planning for the future. COVID stopped us in our tracks and made us take a hard look at where we were going and how we were going to get there. Well, the planning is done, and now it's time for action, it's time for growth, and it's time for some really exciting things in our district. So looking at our budget breakdown, we're starting off with a total operating funds of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This includes about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in Special Improvement District assessment, about forty thousand dollars in projected sponsorships, about fifteen thousand dollars in grants, thirty thousand dollars in fund development, and about fifteen thousand dollars in crowdfunding, which we believe will help us achieve our goal to completing our Paul Robeson statue this year in two thousand and twenty-four. We also have a carryover from two thousand and twenty-three that's going to unfinished projects. One of those projects is the Paul Robeson sculpture, of which we received thirty-four thousand dollars from the county. So now we're just going to take a look at what each of those categories looks like. So we're looking at the breakdown on the pie chart. About four percent of our budget goes to debt service. We have a forty thousand dollar debt service that we're paying to the state of New Jersey for parking lot improvements. We're looking at about thirty-one percent in infrastructure and streetscape support and service. We're looking at about twenty-five percent of our budget going to management costs, fourteen percent to events and event advertising, seven percent to marketing and communication, ten percent to economic vitality, about seven percent to office support, and about two percent to contingency. And we'll break those down in actual numbers. So when we look at our landscape support and service, and I hope that you all have a copy of our budget spreadsheet that has all of these items in a little bit more detail, we're looking at this area to fund our clean and safe program, things like snow removal, seasonal plantings, division street maintenance, decor, and this area, our budget for this area is about two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Next, we're looking at events and event advertising, and this is extremely important, right? Because too often, when we talk to downtown managers, right, they're... Because too often, when we talk to downtown managers, right, they're so quick to say, we're not event planners, right? And the truth is that we're not, but we do know for a fact based on the numbers, right, that events increase foot traffic, which has an ancillary marketing effect, which has a direct impact on sales, which then leads to economic vitality and growth. So the Downtown Somerville Alliance is proud to host over 35 annual events, right, that includes things like Black History Month, Restaurant Week, Girls' Night Out, Tour of Somerville, just saying a few. And so the total budget allocation in this area is about $129,500. Next, we look at marketing and communication, right, which is extending the experience, the Downtown Somerville experience into the digital world. And so in this area, we're looking at a total budget allocation of about $66,000, and that includes our digital advertising, our radio, billboards, TV commercials, our website updates, social media management, email marketing, graphic design, video production, and our current media production.
Natalie, could you just move the microphone closer to you? Just getting some people that are watching that aren't getting your voice well.
Is that better?
Yeah, or I can move that one over if you like.
No, I think this is.
It's okay.
So next, we're looking at economic vitality, and this is the area of our budget where we do strategic planning and direct business support. We're looking at things like merchant events and grand openings, data collection, strategic planning, professional services, our public art programming, and this area of the budget, we're planning for about $90,500. So when we talk about management, right, we know that management is much more than staffing at our events, right? There's a lot that goes into staffing the Downtown Somerville Alliance, especially considering that we're managing over 35 events, right, as well as infrastructure and beautification improvements, marketing, business recruitment and retention. So this is the area of the budget where we're looking at things like salaries, health insurance, 401Ks, and professionals' insurances. So the total budget allocation here is about $232,000. So next, we're looking at office support and contingency. Again, dues and subscriptions, our accounting fees, all the boring stuff is in this area. And the total budget allocation here is about $81,000. And that concludes our budget presentation. I'll open up to any questions from Mayor and Council.
First question is the question I ask every year. What's the surcharge rate? Is it still approximately 8%?
Yes, it is.
No change?
No change to the assessment.
I think that's important for the public at large to know, is that this is special improvement taxation levied on the properties just within the district.
That is correct.
There are no individual homeowner property taxes in this budget.
Yeah, that's correct.
And we said, we've said it every year since 1988, but.
Well, the original proposal actually had a residential component, and we eliminated that on purpose in the original ordinance, and they get exclusively warned by the district property owners, so you're correct.
In a few years, you'll have to put the 40th birthday party celebration in your budget.
Absolutely.
Can you believe it, Mike, that it'll be 40 years since the DMC started? Now, I have, I have no questions. I think that, you know, the activities speak for themselves.
Thank you.
Let me emphasize a couple of things. We forgot to mention that the website was completed this year, and it's already received an award as outstanding, outstanding work. The line that Natalie used, programming with purpose, I really liked that. So you're going to hear a lot of that because it kind of connotes we're not here to fool around, we're actually looking to get things achieved. And you're right, Mayor, you know, raising $900,000, I take that, that creates a responsibility for us to do provide value. And if one, one thing I want to emphasize, we take that seriously, and the way I look at it is, does that investment provide a competitive advantage for the merchants working in downtown and for the community as a whole? And I think it does, as witnessed by that parade the other night. I mean, that's, that's a tremendous value, I think, just living in Somerville and working there. So we're doing the best we can, appreciate any input. I do want to recognize the support of board members. I know we have Randy, Councilman Pitts here, as well as former board member Teresa Bonner. Thank you. Kevin Saluka, and I think Rick St. Pierre was here.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, brother.
Any questions, comments from the table? Start with Dr. Brady.
Yeah, I don't know if this might be long enough. I'll talk loud.
We can hear you.
I know, I know retail has been taking a hit, basically, why? And there are some vacant properties on Main Street. Has that impacted negatively on all of your revenues on the SIB?
Not to my knowledge, but you, you know better than anyone, Councilman Brady, assess valuation tells it, when there's a downturn, downturn takes place first, and then the assessments go down a year or two later. So it's, it's an interesting point, and I think it's another, I guess, warning to really take the valuation of downtown seriously. And again, that's one of the things we're trying to deal with this budget.
I also want to just mention that when, when we look at our vacancy rate, I wouldn't say that our vacancy rate has gone up any higher, right, than what we saw during the height of COVID. We actually fared very well during COVID, and we had very minimal vacancies during that time. And I would say that most of our properties are turning over very quickly. So there is a genuine desire to be in Somerville. It seems like we get phone calls quite frequently about businesses that want to come to Somerville. I think our, what many districts are struggling with right now is large vacancies, right? Looking at those 6,000 square foot properties and how we can fill those.
The other question is a follow-up. Are you having any difficulty trying to get new businesses to move in, in terms of getting permits and that kind of thing? Has that been a problem for you? I think it's something Council should be aware of. You may not be able to do anything about it, but Council should be aware of it. That may be an issue I've heard from several people, that we couldn't get moved in, that they're small or what have you.
Yes, you answered. We wrote a letter expressing concerns with the process. We're not trying to personally point out anyone in particular, but we do ask that the Borough Mayor and Council and the Planning Board take a deep dive, take a close look at our approval process, and if you make it more user-friendly, more efficient, and more cost-effective, that would help us. Because we have heard, in fact, that, so again, it's about encouraging investment, not discouraging investment. And if we, we don't want to get into a point where when an investor is on the cusp of making a decision, they don't decide, they decide not to invest in Somerville Downtown because they don't want to go through the hassle of getting the necessary approvals.
Ms. Bonner, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, you know, I think it's, it looks great, and, you know, I have a love for the DSA. They helped me greatly with my small business, and I think that what you do is so important to build the Downtown Somerville and for the whole town. So, thank you. The events are wonderful, the website's looking great, and I think all the money is worth it for everything you do for this town, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, question, comment?
Yeah, I'd just, just like more, more of a comment. I know we listened to talk about the Fireman's Light Parade, and I think it's important that we remember that this is the, the extensive effort put in by our volunteers. The volunteer firemen who are already volunteering much of their time to keeping us safe, put in these extra hours of, of time decorating the apparatus and setting up the, the parade route and everything, and it's, it's a wonderful thing that, and I'm, I'm sure that you and the DSA really appreciate these outside organizations, such as the Fire Department, that participate in so many of these downtown events.
It's great collaboration.
Thank you. Ms. Stravick?
Yes, I did have a couple of questions. In terms of treescape, coming from the Environmental Commission, certainly happy to see our, your budget reflecting investment in trees again. It's going to be so important, especially if more buildings down there, because you want to have a heating, you know, trees to absorb your heat and, and cool, so the people on the Main Street, so I think that's really important. The one thing, I'm not sure if this is in your budget, but there's a lot of repairs needed on the sidewalk, especially down on the east side of Main, Main Street, going towards the hospital, in front of the new, the, some of the newer stores, the old Don Toggi had the store there, and it's just complete, complete disaster of sidewalks there. So if you could make sure on your budget, you, you can take some, some points out for that, that'd be great. I had another question in terms of your reserve fund. Are you funding that balance? Because as a reserve, as, as Councilman Brady said, you know what happens when your assessments, you know, dry up in, in terms of losing customer, losing tenants and things? So, and do you have, do you have a way to, to fund that reserve?
That's, that's a really astute observation. My personal opinion is the organization would benefit from a larger cash reserve, and that's something we're going to be working on. Because you're right, I mean, it's not, you're right.
Thank you. And then Natalie, you talked about the breadcrumbs, and I think we talked about these ones before somewhere else, but when the Recreation Department ran a, a study with the National Park System, they had gotten a grant, we talked about connecting the different parts of town, and I don't know, again, in the budget, if there's wayfaring signs in, because we talked about, it was great vision to, to connect the bike path, bike and walking path, to downtown so that people could come from other communities, ride their bikes or walk over from Ridgewater or whatever, and then be directed towards town, even to have things like bike racks somewhere, more modernized bike racks where you can lock things, you know, securely lock your bike. So just two cents on that. And, and then the last one, in, in terms of, Councilman Mitchell talked about the Fireman's Parade. I know they're always looking for funding. Is, is in your budget some, some allotment for, for their work? And if not, you might think about that.
Sure, so I'll try and answer a couple of your questions. So a lot of what you're talking about in terms of sidewalks, in terms of wayfinding signage is incorporated into our streetscape plan, which we just adopted this year. Right now, we're in the process of working with our grant writers to find funding to start executing portions of that plan. The DSA does not fund sidewalk improvements. So we fund sidewalk improvements where it pertains to the street, that, I'm sorry, the treescape program. So whenever we remove a tree, we will remove the tree grate that surrounds the tree, and we will fix the sidewalk. But generally speaking, it's, it was our understanding that the borough's policy is that the property owners are responsible for sidewalk improvements that are not related to the treescape program. So we can certainly work with property owners to identify if those sidewalk repairs are needed because of some type of, you know, rooting issue with trees, and certainly we'll look towards the list, the prioritization list that was given to us by the Environmental Commission in order to start tackling those one at a time. But generally speaking, the streetscape does involve sidewalk improvements, as well as lighting, wayfinding signage, and other amenities. So as we enact different portions of that streetscape plan, there will be improvements to the sidewalks as well.
I think, I mean, that might be a long time off, and I just think you have to look at the sidewalks as liability, and I guess we have to get to the bottom of whose responsibility it is.
Sure.
Because down on East Main Street, there was like new, new telephone poles put in, and there's just bricks, they've been there for maybe a year or two, just piled there, and, and the sidewalk has shifted because of that. There's other places up by the courthouse where there's holes in the sidewalk. The bricks somehow got removed. My guess would be with plows, the snow blowers. But, you know, causing someone to just get their heel caught in that. So that's the kind of thing I'm referring to, not a, a big, you know, sidewalk replacement, but just repair and upkeep.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at those areas.
We got the, we got a new kiosk.
Yes, so we did get, as far as wayfinding signage, Somerset County recently sponsored or started a kiosk program to improve wayfinding. We are the only downtown district that received one of those kiosks. It's currently on Division Street. They are currently in the process of reprogramming it and rewrapping it, and it should be completely ready to, to be used within the next few weeks. So we're, we're very pleased about that.
Yeah, we've been waiting for that for a long time.
Yes, so.
You can do like a selfie of it?
Yeah. That's definitely, we've seen a lot of people playing around with it, so we're very excited to have it, but.
Councilman Broom, comment, question?
Oh, thank you. I think that, you know, I always appreciate everything that happens downtown. It's a great place, and I, you know, brings, it brings folks to the area, brings wallets and, and foot traffic into the area, which is always wonderful for our, our, our businesses and our shop owners. You know, to echo Councilwoman Stravick, I guess if there's an issue with sidewalks and it's the owner's purview, then I think maybe code enforcement needs to take a little tour around the downtown and take care of any issues that may be popping up, especially if it's not the DSA that, that would be helping out with that. Just to remind folks to, you know, take care of the sidewalks the way that we're supposed to as homeowners would be fantastic. But again, we're here tonight for you guys, so thank you very much for presenting. I think it's a very conscientious budget that will only benefit, obviously, the businesses, but also the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I would just like to say thank you. This year has been great working with both of you and all the volunteers. Teresa, it's been a great job. I love how you're putting things together and bringing things forward. I commend you all.
Thank you, President.
Final question, talking about the revenue stream again. We have several new projects that are not quite complete, but will be cutting ribbons probably in 2024. How much of a lag time is there from when an entity is complete till the time that assessment is reflected in your budget? Kevin, maybe you know on that?
Yeah, I mean, it all depends on when you say complete, it has all COs. It's usually, you have an added assessment in the, in the following year, and then really about two years by the time they actually see a benefit financially, from the time they're complete.
Is there a delay before we see a downturn in the valuation? So the bed is delayed before it's assessed.
So, so for instance, once the new building on West Main Street opens, it'll get an assessment.
Yes.
Based on the rent income, and then the municipal tax will be calculated, and then the 8% will be calculated.
It picks in, I guess, the next year, and then it's the way, you know, it takes some time before we see.
Which I think will more than offset any loss you'll have in some of the smaller, you know, storefronts being empty.
Well, I think Councilman Brady's point is well taken, but I tend to be optimistic. Bear in mind, you know, we have the bank on the corner of Bridge of Maine. Now we have plans to redevelop the Somerset Trust, which is going to, still hasn't heard of that plan, but I've heard the plan, the plan is spectacular. And the Grandis Building is another one that there's some interest in developing, and then Jack Morris hasn't completed his second half of his project, so there's, there's significant, you know, we're doing great net where we are now. If all those projects get done to the level we don't date new, well.
You'll need six pages for, for next year's budget.
We'll be here for hours.
Well, again, investment encourages more investment.
More investment, correct.
And, you know, a lot of hands, a lot of cooks, a lot of tables involved in this. Thank you for your part. I, I will speak for the council for next year, even though I shouldn't. We're, we're behind you 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to need a motion to accept your introduced budget. So what will happen is, and Mike said it and alluded to it before, is, is we'll be back here again for a public, public hearing on it in the, in the new calendar year. It's a process that, that's been put in place, I don't know, three years ago that we have to follow. So we would need introduction to, I'm sorry, we would need a motion and a, and a roll call vote to accept the DSA's 2024 introduced budget.
I will call for that motion.
I move to accept the DSA's budget and look forward to it being finalized by the new council in 2024. new council in 2024.
And I second that motion. Rock call.
Councilmember Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Thank you again. All right, going back to our regular agenda. Item number six, committee reports, we'll start with Mr. Mitchell to my left.
Okay, the historic advisory committee has requested that we, we pass an ordinance redesignating them to be a standing committee of the borough. Right now, it's considered an ad hoc committee, because it was created by a former mayor. And I don't know why that's a problem, but they prefer, would prefer to be a standing committee of the borough, which would give them a fixed size complement.
Okay, well, any new ordinance would have to start next year.
Yes.
So why don't you, you know, put that on the agenda, you know, sometime early next year?
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right, Councilwoman Stravick?
The environmental commission is gearing up for next year. They're, they'll have a social for December meeting, and they're also willing to accept any resumes for the green team. Personnel, if anyone's looking for work, check the account, the state government website, and there, there are some jobs posted for, or will be for our borough.
Councilwoman Vroom?
As has been mentioned, obviously, this past weekend was the lights parade, holiday lights parade, put on by the fire department, spearheaded by Engine One, who does an absolute fantastic job. But again, to, to highlight, and I know that Councilwoman Mitchell talked about it, hours are spent in preparation, there were plenty of meetings beforehand, obviously, with, with the volunteers, and that's important, as well as decorating the apparatus, and then all of the volunteers who came out from other municipalities. We had a lot, a lot, a lot of participants this year, which was fantastic, and the, the showing of folks throughout the borough was amazing, but Main Street was absolutely packed, to the point of where people were pretty much in, I think, three, almost, everyone was being directed pretty much down the center of Main Street, which is, which was absolutely fantastic. It was really nice to see how many folks came out to support it. And again, obviously, going through the borough, how many folks come out of their houses, and we're sitting there cheering and, and, and everything. It was, it's a very, very fantastic event that we have in the borough, and it's all due to the volunteers who want to put it on, who are there decorating, planning, and getting all the participants involved. And it's not just, it's not just the fire, fire departments, it's the rescue squads, and there are also other civic organizations that were involved. And again, thank you so much to everyone who made it a special evening, and, and for all of the hours that you put in, those volunteer hours, it can't be understated. So, again, thank you very much, and for those of you guys who came out to, to support and wave and, and participate, thank you.
Dr. Brady?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The, we are working on the 2024 budget. As you may know, the budget does not start, or the budget process does not start January 1st, it really starts in September, and we're essentially looking at the appropriations. What's it going to cost us next year to operate? As far as revenue is concerned, that's going to be contingent on many issues, aid packages and what have you. Just for the public, Somerville is a company that has a $24 million annual budget, so it's no longer a small town. I guess maybe people realize that Saturday night. But as we continue this budget, we have to look at the future, and the whole idea of our budget is not only to reflect on our success in the past, but also to provide for the future. And I know it's difficult in these economic times, but this will change, and as it changes, we have to change with it. So hopefully, we will have most of the appropriations under wraps by the first part of the year. Once the revenue figures come in, we will be probably voting a permanent budget in the springtime, and prior to that, of course, we have the temporary budget, which allows us to operate from January 1st. So things are going pretty well, I think. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Bonner?
Thank you. So from the Department of Public Works, they would just like me to remind everyone that December 8th will be the last day for curbside leave pickup. You can still bag your leaves and call for the DPW to pick them up after December 8th. And from the Recreation Department, they're very happy to announce that the Eighth Annual Turkey Trot 5K was a huge success. With over 1,350 participants, they raised $35,000 towards the installation of two new inclusive playgrounds for Somerville. Many thanks to sponsors, participants, volunteers, employees, and spectators. The Somerville Recreation Department is also accepting registrations for programs for children that reside or attend Somerville, a school in Somerville. The first is Raritan Valley Youth Wrestling League for grades K through 6. The second is RIB Basketball League, boys grades 3 and 4, there's four spots left, girls grades 5 and 6, there's two spots left, and girls grades 7 and 8, there's just one spot left. And the third is the DST Beginner Basketball Clinic, deadline is December 20th for signups for that, that's grades 1 and 2. Registrations are accepted in person, by mail, or online at register, at register.communitypass.net backslash summer, backslash Somerville. Please follow them on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram for updates. That's all I have.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to announce the Holiday Fill the Cruiser Blanket Drive, be held this Saturday, hosted by the Somerville Police Department Community Policing Unit. The drop off location will be at Division Street in, in Maine. They will be accepting new blankets, also paper towels and toilet paper. All donations will be given to the Somerville Angel Gift Givers for distribution. As you drop things off, there will be hot cocoa with a cup, and they need your support. Also, the DSA's Holiday Jubilee that was originally scheduled for last Friday has been rescheduled for Friday, December 15th, 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. Please go to the DSA website for more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Two quick items, I want to thank Councilwoman Bonner for filling in, greeting Santa the other night. I'm not mad at him, but I still remember 1959, he promised me a bicycle, and never got it. But that's not why I wasn't there, so thank you for filling in for me. The only other item I have, people talk about how slow government is. For about 20 years, I've been driving west on Union Avenue, just past Hoagie Hut, on the left side, there's been a abandoned auto body mechanic slash gas station slash whatever site. It had a, a DEP sticker in the window, which was so badly faded that when I tried to get the numbers off of it and ask Colin to pursue it in Trenton, it was hard. There were, there were barrels of an undisclosed substance sitting in front, there were monthly calls to cut the grass, complaints from residents. I'm pleased to say, I stopped my bank the other day, and I did a double take, because the site has been leveled, and the zoning board approved condominium project looks like it's going to be in the ground by the spring. Another addition to our housing stock, a little different option. I wish we had more land that we could develop into similar types of projects, because it's a good complement to our older, you know, single family homes and our, our very successful, you know, rental properties. But it just, it just did me a world of good. I drove by that site for 35 years going to work, and I've been driving by it for another 15 years since I've been retired, hoping against hope that it could be reclaimed. So it's another example of a lot that was not only underutilized, but contaminated and dangerous. Through the work of a lot of people at Borough Hall and on our volunteer committees, we're going to have a quality project there. And people are better than weeds, and that's all I have. We have our open public session, I'll call for motion.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Open public comment, you can approach the table, name and address.
Hello, Mayor and council members, my name is Brittany Burton, I own a business in town, Revive Consignment on South Dowdy, and I'm here to represent all the business owners in Somerville to inquire about holiday parking. For many years, it's been free in the lots from Thanksgiving through New Year's, and then I just noticed, and customers were inquiring and confused if it was still free, and when I inquired, it'll be free just on Saturdays.
We have a additional, we have an additional resolution walking on at the end of our agenda, and I'll read the resolution. It says approving free parking in lots 1, 2, 4, and 6 from December 5th, 2023 through New Year's Day. It'll be free parking in lots 1, 2, which are the two on the north side of Maine, 4, which is behind the post office, behind the Division Street, and 6, which is the old Woolworths lot, if, the one we just repaved.
Correct.
And that would start tomorrow through New Year's Day, and that resolution will be on for adoption, consideration and adoption with, at the end of the public session.
Thank you, appreciate that greatly. It's been a tough year with the recession, and people are pinching pennies, when they're having to pay more for groceries and PSE and G, and then all the construction this summer, if people can't easily park, it really affects things. I was shocked that just half my street was closed, and it really affected that month. So the business owners appreciate that resolution, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public?
Natalie Panero, Downtown Somerville Alliance, 50 Division Street. I know you guys have heard enough from me today, but I just, I want to start off going on the record by just saying thank you to the mayor and council, thank you to our Somerville Police Department, thank you to Somerville Fire Department for being so accommodating with the rescheduling of the Holiday Jubilee. When rain was called into the forecast, we got everybody on the horn and asked for their support in rescheduling, and everybody jumped to task, so I, I want to formally go on the record and thank everybody for that. And finally, I want to thank everybody for, Mayor, what you just mentioned, the walk-on resolution regarding the free parking. As Britt alluded to, we've been receiving a lot of commentary about the free parking issue, and we're really so proud that, you know, we could bring those concerns to mayor and council, and you guys would take care of it so quickly for us. So, again, thank you, we appreciate it, and we're looking forward to another wonderful year. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close.
So moved. Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Public session is closed, we have our consent resolutions, including 349, which I just mentioned, free parking in lots 1, 2, 4, and 6 from the 5th of December through New Year's Day. Are there any resolutions that council would like to pull?
I'd like to just make a comment on 349 when the, when the time comes.
Okay. I would like to pull 344. All right, I'll summarize these very quickly while my cough drop holds out. 338, awarding, authorizing the borough to accept a sub grant award from emergency management. 339 is a change order to Voler's Construction for Parking Lot 6. 340 is settlement for tax appeal for 45 Gaston Avenue for the years 2020 to 2023. 341 is a settlement agreement with SSP Architects for Interior Design at the facility where we are right now. 342 is a change order with Millennium Communication Group for some improvements here at this facility. 343 is an application authorization for grant funding to statewide insurance. 345 is a two-year service agreement for Animal Control Services renewal. 346, authorizing an application to the Department of Community Affairs, American Rescue Plan Firefighters Grant. 347, amending resolution 231106333, authorizing free parking in lots 1, 2, 4, 6, and 7 on Friday, December 15th, 2023, for the Holiday Jubilee. 348 is approving 159, Chapter 159 for the State of New Jersey Drug Driving Enforcement Fund, and I'll, I'll also pull 349. So take a motion for those as a group.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Resolution 344 is accepting the resignation of Candace Fegolio, effective December 30th, 2023, end of business. Motion.
So moved.
Second. I'd just like to comment, we wish Candace very well, she's accepting employment in another town. People in Borough Hall this year have, have been extremely flexible and diligent, we've had a, a series of, of personnel modifications needed through illness, retirement, and, and other factors, and everyone there, including our administrator, and he, he won't like me to mention it, but everybody wears 10 hats, and they wear them very well. You go past Borough Hall at night, it's not the mayor's light that's on, it's the staff lights that are on, and we, you know, Candace filled in, in a number of roles, everyone there is being cross-trained and trying to do multiple jobs, because, you know, customer service is important to us. So we are advertising for the position, but should be hard to, hard to fill, so can I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I did it right, okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
And 349 is free parking in lots 1, 2, 4, and 6 from December 5th through New Year's Day, and I have a motion.
So moved.
Grant, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Teresa for, Teresa Bonner, who's a great councilwoman, who keeps her eye on everything, and she brought it to our attention, and I, right away, reached out to Kevin, and I said, no discussion, let's go, go with it, so let's just go with it. Thank you very much, Teresa.
And, and just what their record reflects, it is not for Main Street parking or side street parking, it's for the lots. So regular enforcement will still take place from, Kevin, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
Yeah, except for Veterans Memorial, 7:00 to 7:00.
7:00 to 7:00, for the commuters, okay. So lot, lot parking will be free, and signs will be posted, or the machines can calibrate, they won't accept payment?
Yeah, they wouldn't accept payment.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Accused.
Bills and vouchers, Dr. Brady?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. It was a slow week, I would like to move a payment of bills and vouchers in the amount of $632,570.51, and that's my motion.
Second. Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Accused.
Bills and vouchers, Dr. Brady?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. It was a slow week, I would like to move a payment of bills and vouchers in the amount of $632,570.51, and that's my motion.
Second. Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Accused.
Bills and vouchers, Dr. Brady?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. It was a slow week, I would like to move a payment of bills and vouchers in the amount of $632,570.51, and that's my motion.
Second. Councilmembers Scranton Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
and four mayors, not including myself. And I must say that this group is the equal to any of those groups. I'll have a little bit more to say at our next meeting, but from the folks that we represent and from myself personally, thank you for a good year. And with that, Mr. Mitchell.
Move for adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in two weeks.